Welcome to the Monday, June 3rd, 2019 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Pandeleon. Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Newman.
Here.
Alderman Rummel.
Here.
Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Biddy. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, all liberty and justice for all.
Are you too crowded over there?
The first item on the agenda tonight is comments by the mayor. First item on that agenda is the approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring Account Clerk III, Lironda Haynes, who unfortunately was pulled away by a family emergency, so isn't with us tonight. But I would ask for, hang on, let me make sure I have this. So I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 2019 and '20 Board and Commission Appointments and Reappointments. We have one additional appointment from the last meeting. John L. Anderson being appointed to the Cemetery Commission for Ward II. Could I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the Lake Forest Day Proclamation, which I will read. And welcome, American Legion Representative Richard Tucker. Whereas the McKinlock Post 264 of the American Legion has undertaken to provide appropriate exercises and entertainment in celebration of Lake Forest Day on Wednesday, August 7th, 2019, with a view to bringing together the people of our city in the furtherance of civic interests and advancement of community fellowship. And whereas the McKinlock Post 264 of the American Legion honors Lake Forest residents, employees, neighbors, and friends by adopting the theme "Lake Forest, American Legion, Supporting Veterans and Community for 100 Years." Therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that said Lake Forest Day celebration is declared to be a city fair, and in pursuance thereof, and Tuesday, August 6th, 2019, and Wednesday, August 7th, 2019, shall be observed as a holiday in the city of Lake Forest, and our people are urged to forsake their ordinary pursuits and gather in West Park in a spirit of comradeship and goodwill in support of the ideals of our city. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 100 years. Pretty impressive. So thank you again. The next item on the comments by mayor is a statement that I'd like to make regarding the IDOT pronouncement opposing a third rail in the city at Lake Forest and Glenview. Cities of Lake Forest and Glenview. Last month, IDOT Acting Secretary Omer Osman sent a letter to State Senator Julie Morrison confirming that IDOT will not pursue holding tracks in either Lake Forest or the Village of Glenview. Receiving this written confirmation brings needed closure to this important issue. There are many people who should be acknowledged for their efforts in bringing this matter to a successful resolution. Particularly, I'd like to express my gratitude to State Senator Julie Morrison and many other state and federal legislators, to Metra's leaders, to the Village of Glenview, and the many residents of all of the affected communities who mobilized through their respective action committees to ensure this outcome. This is great news for the city of Lake Forest, and I am very pleased that this issue is now resolved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of council. Good evening. I'm first pleased to introduce Carol Summerfield, the Executive Director of the History Center of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff. She is here to share some exciting news and programming information at the History Center. Carol?
Hello. Pleased to see you all here. All right, so I'm going to give you just a little brief outline of what we're doing at the History Center, which was originally the Historical Society of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff. So we have a mighty but tiny staff of four. I am the new Executive Director. Lisa Frye is our Development Director. Nene Lustig is our Marketing Director, and Lori Stein is our Head of Curation. And we will be adding a visitor service person full-time in the fall. And we've got a couple of really lovely interns who will be joining us this summer from Worcester and from University of Missouri. All right, so a little about the History Center. We formed in 1972 to honor the Lake Forest and Lake Bluff history. And one of the things that we're focused on right now is establishing an understanding of why communities form where they form, and how they survive, and how they thrive. And we really are looking at gathering a broad spectrum of stories, and we'll talk a little about how we're doing that. The second thing is, we've been in a lot of places. We were at the Gorton Center, then we were in a coach house, and we are now actually down the road on Deer Path. And if you've not been in, I encourage you to come. We offer two to three learning opportunities every month. We have evening lectures. We have Saturday programming. I'm really pleased to say that since we've moved into our new quarters, we've gone from an average of 15 people attending an event to more than 50. So it's a great sign that lifelong learners are here and active in the community. We also have something new in that we have a large building, the old house that's on the property has become an archive. And if you're interested in doing research, all you have to do is call the curator, let her know what you're researching. And if we have materials, we will actually pull the materials and put them on a public journal for you for the duration. So if you've got a historical novel you've been dying to write, we are here to support you. Or if you want to study your house history, which is one of our most common things, or your family history, we've got materials. All right, so how are we building a newer, broader audience? So the first thing we've got is we have four digital screens in which we're adding 15 to 20 stories a month, so we're now probably close to 300 stories already on the digital archives. We will continue to add that. And one of the ways that we are going to do that is, in the fall, we're actually creating a recording studio where you can come in and tell stories. And we're talking short, little stories of any aspect of your life here in Lake Forest or Lake Bluff. So it's an easy system. It walks you through as prompts. And one of the goals of this is to actually get daily narratives of what it was like going to camp, going to school, of all different ages. And one of the things that we're looking to build is a very large sort of sociological archive of what daily experience is like in suburban Chicago. So please, again, encourage your family to come in and give us little stories. And they will be online and available through the digital display from that point forward. So your grandkids can come in and show them what you sounded like in 2019 and 2020. So that, again, launches September 2019. We also have the ability, for those who are really tech savvy, starting in September, to add stories online. And one of the things that we're really looking to do is collect photographs and stories behind those photographs. So you will have the ability with the Add a Story button to our website to be able to add stories on any topic that you want. And then you can do a little write-up. You can add audio. You can add primary documents, whatever you want. And it's one of the ways for us to expand all of the stories that we now have collected for the community. All right, programming and education. As I said, we've really expanded how many people we reach already in the last six months, and we're looking to continue that. So we're doing a series on genealogy. We've already had three programs, very well attended. The next phase of it is talking about how you investigate your family history, and then how you write those stories down, partly in preparation of Studio 509, our recording studio, but also because we get a lot of requests from people who want to know how to tell their family's story in a way that's really interesting. We also have a fun and really unusual topic coming up on obituary writing. You don't think of this as an art, but it is, in fact, a really interesting story as to how people do it. And then also, how do you tell a story from a photo? And we've got journalists who are going to be coming in and helping us with those. In the fall, we've got a program on Woodrow Wilson where we will be talking about negotiating armistice after World War I and some of the Lake Forest role in that. And then next year, we've got an entire year-long program called Turning 20 in the 20s, which we're very excited about, and we've gotten a lot of engagement on so far, from not only the public but from other museums. And this is about what it was like to turn 20 between the years 1920 and 1929, and what it is like to turn 20 now, and what in that century has changed. We'll be focusing the first third of the year on young women's lives, and then the last part of the year on after the war, what it was like coming home from World War I, and what young military men are facing today as they come home, and looking at how much has changed. And during the summer, we're looking at creating a collective experience in combination with some of the restaurants and some of the other sister institutions in the city on prohibition nights. What was it like after we legalized alcohol? And what were some of the fun festive ways people navigated that 100 years ago? So we're excited about programming for next year. And if you've got any thoughts, you know where to find me. All right, two things that we've got coming up immediately in the next couple of weeks, we actually opened an exhibit on the Bears. One of the exciting parts of Lake Forest is that we've got three Hall of Fame writers who have actually covered the Bears the last 30-some years. And we've got them writing about what it's been like. We also have, focusing on what was it like having bears sort of wandering the streets, which is really funny if you don't know the Chicago Bears were here when I say that to people. They really interpret that differently. But this is an exhibit on just having bears play at Lake Forest College, what it's been like having their corporate headquarters here. Just a very fun, little festive exhibit that we've got up for the summer. And we also will have, because we're sports agnostic, we will have a lecture on the Cubs and stories from the dugout. All right, if you want to find out more about our programming, we are at lflbhistory.org. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but otherwise, thank you very much for the time.
I have a question. Isn't there a big Bears anniversary coming up?
Why, yes, there is. Thank you for shilling for me on that one. It is their 100th anniversary as a franchise. And so they've got a bunch of events that they've got planned, but we really thought it was important that we celebrate them in a way that was uniquely Lake Forest and Lake Bluff. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would only add, having the pleasure of touring the History Center myself a few months ago, the manner in which they've blended history and technology together really is really remarkable. So congratulations on the wonderful community asset you guys have built over there. I also wanted to provide a very brief update on what was a pretty whirlwind weekend in Springfield, both for the council and the public. I would preface my comments by saying I think it will take some time to fully digest and analyze all of the legislation that came out of Springfield this weekend, but I think, as most people may know, it was pretty busy for our legislators. So first, I just wanted to provide, again, a brief update on the state budget that was passed, or more specifically, any impacts it may have on the city of Lake Forest. And again, this will be fairly high-level. I think there will be much more analysis that will go into it, and staff will be happy to report back to the council at a future meeting. But it appears that there were no further reductions to state shared revenues, so I guess that's good news for us, all things considered. The state budget that was approved did maintain the 5% LGDF cut to municipalities. That's the same as it was last year, if you recall. Two years ago, it was originally a 10% reduction. In addition, the budget maintains the 1.5% sales tax administrative collection fee. And so that, too, remains in effect as a carryover from last year. In addition, the state approved a capital budget of $45 billion. Just a few of the revenue highlights to note in there. The gasoline tax was increased from 19 cents to 38 cents per gallon, and I believe slightly more for diesel purchases. The cigarette tax was increased by $1 per pack, and then there were various increases to vehicle registration fees as well. And how that will impact us in totality remains to be seen, but I can say on the expenditure side that I do believe some of that money will come directly back to Lake Forest through increased per capita motor fuel tax distributions. And then there may also be some additional state-funded projects in the community that are still to be determined. Then I would also note a few other important pieces of legislation that were approved. The formal decriminalization of recreational marijuana was approved, and I believe signed by the governor. Much more to come on that for future council policy discussion, but we're taking the time of staff to really analyze the impacts of that. And then another one I'd like to highlight that I think was unanticipated or didn't get a lot of attention was a bill to, in essence, impose the local or municipal sales tax rates for online purchases. And that would be based on the point of delivery of any purchase made online. That is scheduled to take effect July 1 of 2020. I think there are a lot of details still to be worked out. It came about, I think, fairly suddenly. It would be great if it comes to pass, and I think certainly a lot of communities have been hoping to level the playing field between brick-and-mortar retailers and online retailers. But having said that, there are also a lot of tracking and reporting issues that I think need to be resolved, given the disparity of local rates. So again, more to come on all of that, but I thought it was important to at least provide a very cursory overview. And from at first glance, it appears that really there was no additional negative financial impact to Lake Forest beyond what we hadn't already planned for in our current budget. So pleased to see that. And if there are no other questions, then that concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions for city manager? Thank you, Jason. Next item is committee reports. I don't know that we have any, but no committee reports tonight? All right. The next item is opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. If there's anybody here who'd like to speak to the city council on items that are not on the agenda tonight, you're welcome to raise your hand. Okay, there being none. Next item is items for omnibus vote consideration. There are four, reasonably manageable number. One is approval of the May 20th, 2019 first session of the city council meeting minutes. Second is approval of the May, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll go through them all if people have meeting.
Got you, got you. Go ahead.
Second is approval of the May 20th, 2019 second session of the city council meeting minutes. Third is approval of the check register for the period of May 4th to 24th, 2019. And the fourth is consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Are there any items that anybody would like to raise or pull off the list, or comments or other thoughts? Yes, no?
I would just like to make a comment on item number four. And this really doesn't relate directly to this specific recommendation or this specific residence. But it, and I've spoken to Kathy about this before. I continue to be concerned about the amount of impermeable surface that is allowed on lots. And I see that this is well thought out, so I'm not objecting to this particular one. But I want to take this opportunity to just highlight that I know we have a bulk ordinance, but is hardscape on a lot taken into consideration in that bulk ordinance?
Currently, the code, in a separate section from the building scale ordinance, permits structures to cover up to 30% of a zoning lot. We do not have any overall impervious surface limitation.
So this is, that speaks to my concern, then, is that, and I don't know how to go about this, but I would, I'd like to look at a way that we can look at how much impermeable surface is permitted on a lot. It doesn't seem to me, you know, we get constant reports about our rainfall increasing, and we are doing sewer projects, and there's just so much we can do with water. And I think, you know, every time, it's sort of death by 1,000 bites when we keep approving, be it, you know, these additions, and some of them are quite significant. So I'm just wondering if we're, we need to look beyond just a bulk ordinance, but maybe really consider how much impermeable surface is permitted on a specific lot. And, you know, and that includes tennis courts, swimming pools, patios. You know, there's a lot more. I noticed in my own neighborhood, there are a lot more large patios with fireplaces being put in, and that's lovely, but it certainly all contributes to impermeable surface. And I don't know if there's a feeling that the council might like to look at this, but I just thought I would raise it.
And we have, in years past, had the discussion about an impervious surface ordinance. Certainly, that's something perhaps the Public Works Committee could revisit. It is a complicated task, but we certainly can revisit that and...
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. I spent six years on the HPC, and one of the real benefits of our community is that every lot is different, right? And we can't, in this sense, try to legislate every single scenario. And just as a person that was on the commission, and I was the chair, even though there's not hard and fast ordinances, we always factored it in. It was always factored into every conversation that we had. The neighbors are worried about flooding and landscaping. People actually don't like impermeable surface to the extent to which, you know, they're going to cover the whole yard. But we always balanced it. And I'd be concerned that we tried to central plan and legislate something when I don't really see any examples of egregious behavior that's happening. Now, if somebody says to me, hey, there's 10 things that went through the HPC and the BRB, Jim, and you haven't been on it in a long time, and these things fell through the cracks, and we have a problem, then let's allocate some time to try to fix it. But let's not create a problem that doesn't exist. So I would suggest that we rely on the commissions that are doing this work already very thoughtfully. And if there are some problems, then let's surface it here, but I don't really see a big need.
With that, I mean, to my, having been on a number of boards and commissions myself, and I know it's always been something that's on the agenda for discussion, I'm just trying to think process-wise, would that be something we would ask the plant commission to study and then modify the zoning code, perhaps?
I think there are a couple different ways. And again, tonight, it's not on your agenda, so we don't want to get into an in-depth discussion. It certainly could be something that would regulate through the zoning code, but it also is very tied in with the whole stormwater discussion. So perhaps we should just take what we've heard and perhaps surface it at the Public Works Committee, or come back to you with maybe a broad overview to let you give us some direction on whether or not you want to pursue it.
Kathy, I'm wondering, I do think we ought to, I do think we ought to, just because of the increase of the rain events, as we seem to call them here, and the serious rain events, it feels like it's something we ought to be mindful of. I think one of our new comprehensive topics is going to be housing. Would that intersect at all there, do you think, that in terms of, I don't know if it logically does, but it seems like we're talking primarily, I guess we're not talking exclusively about residences, but if that's...
And you recently adopted the Sustainability Plan as a chapter
Yeah.
of the comprehensive plan, but as we go through this update, one of the things we've talked about is how to weave aspects of different chapters through that plan. So that actually might be a very good way to tackle it.
Might be a logical, through that, yeah.
Okay, well, Kathy, why don't we note this and
Noted.
then come up with some ideas of where to place it as a responsibility for study. And then it'll come back through normal processes to be adjudicated or reviewed by the appropriate committees and commissions and so forth.
I would just want to be sure that, although I agree with Alderman Rummel that this, and it sounds like this is the direction that we're going, but I also agree very strongly with Alderman Preschlack. We have very fine boards and commissions. And in fact, I intend to make a comment about that later, but there is no way we could function without the quality work that goes on there. So I think we would want to be sure that wherever at the board and commission level this needed to be carefully considered, we would want to be absolutely sure that it goes there. Right. Absolutely. Thank you.
I would just like to add, if I may, I think this is a topic that applies to every, or if not every, many boards and commissions.
Commissions, yeah.
So if we think about it, we might apply it universally as a topic for the year.
It's an interesting idea.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
No further comments? I would entertain a motion to approve the omnibus items?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is a roll call vote?
Yep.
So, Biddy, please call the roll.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rummel.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances. There is one ordinance. Consideration of a recommendation from the plant commission in support of a special use permit for Scouts, a family-friendly restaurant in the existing building at Westwood Center, 950 Northwestern Avenue. If desired by the council, waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance. By the way, did we need to do something with that on the omnibus, on the, there was a final reading, was a first reading and a final option? Did we do that with the roll call? We covered both?
Yes.
Okay. So this is going to be presented by Kathy Cerniak, who conveniently is already at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This recommendation comes to you from the plant commission. Plant commission voted 6-0 to forward this recommendation to you. This is a request for a special use permit to authorize a new restaurant, Scouts, partially within 150 feet of a residential zoning district. The new restaurant is proposed on the corner, on the southwest corner of Woodland Road and Western Avenue in an existing development. Probably most people still refer to this as the old Burger King development, although Burger King's been gone for a number of years. In December of last year, the city council approved a special use permit for Kuro Sushi Restaurant that will actually be located in the space previously occupied by Burger King and more recently by the bank, or by Westwood Bistro. We've referred to this area as Westwood Square. The new owners, local owners, are now re- The new owners, local owners, are now referring to this as Westwood Center. Scouts Restaurant, and let me just orient you, the floor plan we're going to see actually turns this around, and I'll show you where Western Avenue is. But Scouts Restaurant is proposed in the southeast corner of the existing building, across, in part, across from the parking lot at Jewel and with frontage on Western Avenue. The code, as I mentioned, requires a special use permit for standards, standard restaurants that are within 150 feet of a residential zoning district. In this case, only a part of the restaurant is within 150 feet, but nevertheless, we took it forward to the plant commission for review. 150-foot line goes through about right here. Just a quick overview, again, Western Avenue now is at the bottom of your screen. Woodland is here. You may, this is the Jewel parking lot. The Cleaners is currently in this location. The Foot Spa is currently in this location. The proposed restaurant will actually, the tenant space will include both of those spaces and will extend back. The entrance to the restaurant will be internal, so we really preserve those wide-open storefront window views into the restaurant and into the activity. Putting the more passive uses back internal to this development, and Kuro on this side and Scouts on this side really enlivenes this development. The plant commission was excited about this proposal, particularly given the existing residential units that are within residential, within walking distance, single-family neighborhoods, condominiums on Laurel Avenue, Crystal Point, the 1301 Western Avenue condominiums, but also the new focused development, all of the new units that are being developed on the city's former municipal services site. The restaurant will be owned and operated by Jason Ekeman, a local resident, recently moved his young family to the community, lives within walking distance of the restaurant. And he is an experienced restaurateur. He, along with his partners, own and operate a number of restaurants, not only in Chicago, but across the country. So the plant commission felt good, as Mr. Ekeman described his experience, and really his hope that this restaurant would really be a community amenity, hence the name Scouts, to really appeal to families, perhaps after athletic events, teams to gather in this area. The capacity of the restaurant will be about 200 people, but intentionally, the space will be flexible to accommodate large families. Seasonally, there will be seating in the courtyard, and the benefit of that is not only that it allows outdoor dining, but also in an area that's secluded from the neighborhood. The entire building certainly could benefit from an upgrade, and that is part of what the new owners propose. Refacing the entire building, making some changes to the fenestration, both on the first floor and on the second floor, adding some detailing, removing some of, really, the outdated materials and outdated details. So just to give you a concept, this actually would be the view of the southeast corner of the building as you're traveling northbound on Western Avenue. So again, really using those windows, wrapping a new window around the south side of the building to really show the activity of the street and make it something that helps enliven this part of the business district. The plant commission was sensitive to the fact that this property is adjacent to some single-family residential homes, certainly adjacent to the West Park neighborhood. And in your packet, as an exhibit to the ordinance, you have a recommendation for 12 conditions of approval, very high level. Some of these conditions are the same as you approved for Kuro for the overall site. They speak to perimeter fencing and landscaping, really assuring that there's some new plantings, but also that the existing plantings and fences are maintained. You may recall that prior to the current owners, this development really was in some disrepair, and there was an owner, a landlord, who was not responsive to either the city or tenants. The conditions impose limitations on the alley, making it one-way, moving from Woodland Road out to Western Avenue to try and be sensitive-- in the direction of headlights, not impacting single-family homes. There are conditions that speak in detail to parking. This site is unusual in the business district that there's parking both underground and on the site. It also has the advantage of, certainly in the evening hours, a lot of available public spaces on Western Avenue, and the opportunity for valet and employee parking just across the railroad tracks on the east side. The conditions also speak to exterior lighting. With respect to the Scouts Restaurant specifically, the conditions speak to the maintenance of the ventilation system, which is required as a performance standard in the code. They specify courtyard hours, and they establish limitations on amplified music. The plant commission discussed that quite in depth, but really felt that the way the condition was put forward by the plant commission, that the amplified music could not be heard outs, off of the site. So really benefiting from the fact that that courtyard is internal to the development. Restaurants as special uses have to be evaluated based on not only the criteria for special use permits, but also the criteria, which are detailed in the code, performance standards for restaurants. The plant commission, I will say enthusiastically forwarded this, excited to have another restaurant in the community. Again, it was a six to zero vote. If you choose to do so, it will be appropriate to grant, to waive first reading and grant final approval of a special use permit, authorizing Scouts Restaurant to operate at this location, subject to the conditions of approval and generally in conformance with the plan submitted. And then, just to end, I just wanted to make the point, remind everyone to eat local. And I tried to list all of our restaurants, but in particular, Kuro, which is expected to open hopefully by the end of the summer. There's work going on in the space now. And then Scouts pending approval would be anticipated to open next spring, spring of 2020. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Alderman Bushman.
Sorry. Couple of questions. If it's approved by the council tonight, will it go before the BRB?
This has already been before the building review board?
So the rendering you showed has been approved by the BRB?
It has been. And that's really distinct and separate from the restaurant approval. That's for the overall building. But the facade changes and the signage motif for the entire development has been approved by the building review board and actually was on your omnibus agenda at the last meeting.
Sorry I missed that, but including like the windows and the awnings and that has been approved already.
Yes.
Very good. I just wondering whether we're speculating on the rendering, but it sounds like you're ahead of me at least on this. Second question, you refer to parking on the east side of the tracks. Is the only way to access that east parking through Woodland under the bridge?
It is. And when, what's currently MLG, but what formerly was the Grill, when that restaurant went in, the council had the same discussion, and actually lighting was added under that viaduct to really make that accessible. And from the perspective of how far you would have to walk to restaurants if you were in the city, that walk is really pretty minimal for employees or for valet parkers.
And recognizing sometimes that intersection is a little bit difficult to manipulate it from the driver's standpoint, do we have a pretty good record that we don't have accidents occurring there, particularly from a pedestrian standpoint?
There's been very few accidents that are at all, very few car crashes.
Very good, thank you.
Alderman Moreno?
Would you refresh my memory on a special use permit for this restaurant in particular? What's the duration? And I know that there was discussion about sound and lighting pollution, I'll call it. What's the process to reevaluate if needs be?
If the conditions of a special use permit are violated, the city's practice is to first work with the business owner, the property owner, give them a courtesy notice and try to resolve the issue. Ultimately, a special use permit could be brought back to the plant commission for evaluation and reconsideration. And if that occurred, we would certainly notice the neighbors. But most of the time, we have the opportunity to work through issues and ideally resolve those. There is that tension between our single-family residential homes and our business district. It's both a good thing and sometimes a problematic thing.
Not that I'm anticipating problems, but a special use permit, once granted, does it stay with the property owner? No.
It stays with the business. So if Scouts, if this particular restaurant went out and Moreno's Bar and Grill wanted to go in--
Highly unlikely.
--a new special use permit would need to be considered.
Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Beidler.
Yes, a couple of points of praise all around. I think this is a terrific project. I would like to thank the plant commission. This is an example, I thought, in this packet of a terrific write-up. I mean, I felt like it was, whoever was at the meeting and did the write-up, I felt like I was at that meeting. And we always love a six oh vote, and enthusiastic six oh vote is even better. But I would also, and I believe Mr. Altonian is in the audience tonight, praise the Altonian family for all they've done in this community. But this is a great project, and it's really a terrific area, and it just hasn't been, it just hasn't been fulfilled in so long. And most of us drive by it on a fairly regular basis, going from one place to the other, and that we're going to have the quality project there that you have envisioned, which is obviously thanks to you, to your architect, and also that you found the chef. I don't know how hard, whether he came to you or you went to him, but it just looks to me like this one is going to be wonderful, having a family restaurant. I'm just, I'm thrilled all the way around. So I just wanted to say that, and I really appreciate having that very deep inside dive from the plant commission. So thank, please extend those, thanks.
Alderman Gashgarian.
I have a question. I think it's an excellent rendering, and I'm very excited for it, and I want to thank the Altonian family also. The one concern I have is as we move forward with this pending approval, we know that that's an area town that's frequented by many, many high school drivers. Are there any special considerations that are going to be brought forward in terms of when construction can begin? Because there's that window of time when you have that certain number of students rushing to school, 20 minutes, 15 minutes late to school, and they may not be seasoned drivers yet, and we may have workers coming in and going out, basically observing the rules as they should. But I just hate to see a scenario where something could be set up for a potential problem. And I know we're coming up to the end of the school year now, but maybe you could speak to when the project is going to begin and when that heavy traffic phase might be completed.
First, I'll say, prior to issuing building permits, we do require a staging and construction parking plan. And certainly, in this case, to your point, we can add, really looking at the hours of construction activity. It's that, again, that tension between wanting a project to get done and cleaned up and open and certainly wanting activity around the site to be safe. So we can certainly look at that. My recollection is that maybe we're looking at a fall start for some of the work?
Midsummer to late summer.
So we will make note of that point and work with the owners and the contractors to be sure we're, everyone's aware of that, the heavily traveled intersection before and after school.
Any other comments from the council? Are there any members of the public that would like to speak about this petition? Could you step forward and introduce yourself?
Colonel Alderman, what are the hours of the restaurant?
The restaurant will serve both lunch and dinner. The ending time for the courtyard was 11:00 PM. The plant commission had some discussion about that, recognizing that our liquor licenses do allow service of alcohol till midnight, so most of the other restaurants in the community can be open. However, what we see is that sometimes it's, people aren't out that late. So 11 would be the ending time, but would it always be open that late? I'm not sure.
As we continue to age as a community, we go to bed earlier. Other questions or comments from the members of the public? Here being none, I would bring this back to the council for potential waiver of first reading and granting a final approval of the ordinance approving a special use permit for Scouts, a new family-friendly restaurant at Westwood Center, 950 Northwestern Avenue in accordance with the plant commission recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. One of the most common comments that I get from people around town is that we need more restaurants. We need more restaurants. And it seems that the ones we have, by and large, are doing pretty well. So this is great progress, and the improvements to the building are going to, I don't think people are going to appreciate how much better that building's going to look when this is done, so.
Before you began office, there was a discussion a couple of years ago about a liquor license at Starbucks to serve wine. And a lot of residents didn't like that idea because they said the kids don't have anywhere to go. So I think this fills that gap very nicely.
Thank you. Next item is new business. We have one item of new business, nope, two items. Number one is approval of a construction administration agreement for telecommunications facilities with MCI Metro Access Transmission Services Corporation. This will be presented by Mike Strong, the assistant to the city manager.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, members of council. I'll be introducing a construction administration agreement to authorize the construction installation of several miles of fiber optic cables that Verizon, or MCI Metro, a subsidiary of Verizon, is interested in performing. So just some quick background, the state of Illinois grants authority to licensed telecommunications operators for this purpose. The city, like many other communities in Illinois, have adopted local regulations that just put sort of parameters and requirements around that access, especially when they're utilizing rights away that are maintained by the city. So we have in Chapter 98 of the city code various standards that regulate the location, the sighting, the permitting, the insurance, the liability, all those standard performance requirements. We were approached earlier this year by Verizon with a fairly comprehensive build-out plan for the next 12 to 18 months. And in reviewing that plan, the engineering section specifically noted that some of the areas that they were looking to install this cable may or may not be located in areas where we are going to be working on some larger capital projects. So this is just a quick map, just outlining the scope of work that Verizon has already submitted plans for. So just right off the bat, just to kind of orient, you know, we have the western corridor, we have Wesley, Old Elm, Waukegan, Route 60, some fairly large thoroughfares. And Ward, Ward's 1 and 2, you know, the Old Elm project's going to get started. We've also got Waukegan worked. There's some work right there by the hospital, Westmoreland. So we, very early on, engineering was being fairly cognizant of saying, well, you know, we have all this work planned, but, you know, let's not go digging up new roads or, you know, rights away that we've restored for this purpose. So we worked with the city attorney's office to sit down in the room and to start project planning, taking a look at what the build-out was going to encompass, to take a look at some of the projects we had lined out. And, you know, we sort of came to an agreement that, you know, maybe having a stronger relationship than, you know, just requiring a license agreement for each permit would make sense. So it's a way, and this construction agreement, you know, really allows for us to engage in that type of relationship. It's similar to like a non-exclusive franchise agreement, you know, not like we have with ComEd or Comcast where we're authorizing them access pursuant to certain regulations, but maybe relaxing some of the standards for permitting, maybe not requiring that they have security for every individual permit. they have security for every individual permit, which can be costly and administratively burdensome. So this evening, the agreement that we had sort of come up with and that we've been negotiating with Verizon over the last few months, really, I think, achieves that, that goal, and allows them to come in, have sort of one, shall we call it, a liability agreement or arrangement that they can then umbrella their permits with. But it also requires that we sit down at the beginning of every year and sort of lay this plan out, so that we can coordinate with future projects. We have, it authorizes us to sort of dictate potentially or work with them on relocating certain areas that they want to install this infrastructure. You know, it doesn't forego the requirement for them to get I-DOT approval, because a lot of these, some of these routes are I-DOT, they still require permits there. But it just allows us to maybe work a little bit more coordinated and have a little bit more coordination as we sort of move forward. They're looking at this as about a three-year, you know, build-out period. So every three years, with capacity, the small cells, some of the other infrastructure that we're going to start to see deployed is typically how often they're going to be replacing these. So we felt that was a comfortable time period to look at for the term of this agreement. And that, you know, really, they would probably only have two or three projects working concurrently. Our restoration standards, our permitting, all the other inspection standards in Chapter 98 of the city code would still prevail, but it just allows us to, again, sit in the room at the beginning of the year to kind of lay out and program all this. So I've put up some basic terms of that agreement. There's also a copy of the agreement that was put in your packet that, you know, I'd be happy to talk through more. But this evening, you know, we're really looking for consideration, approval from the city council on engaging Verizon in this agreement for the next three-year period, and then directing that we prepare that for execution, so that they can move forward with their build-out plans this summer. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or address any other information that may be helpful to council.
Alderman Rommel.
When you go to the map, it looks like there, and maybe we talked about this before, and I apologize, but that's going down Old Elm, right?
Correct, in the south east corner.
And are we doing that concurrent with the sewer project?
No, so we'll actually be, and I think as of this afternoon, most likely, they'll be coming in before it's restored, so we'll be able to actually kind of piggyback the work, so that we're not laying seed down and they're coming and disturbing that. So it will be coordinated with if they're ready. See, the part of the issue is they're trying, they're going to start around the hospital property and kind of work their way south, but there's some infrastructure they can put in and they'll just tie into, you know, sort of down the road. So, but that's a project we're really, you know, being, trying to be considered of, to coordinate with them directly, so.
I'm sorry, so they will be putting it in while they're doing this sewer?
No, it would be after we're done. So before we laid seed, correct.
Okay, got it.
Other questions? I have just a technical question. I assume they're going to be using directional boring, so the amount of excavation is going to be minimal?
Correct, yeah, and most of it is just bore pits, you know, in areas that would make sense. Now, there's some areas there where you may have a little bit more exposure, but yes, it will be directionally bored. That's what's been presented so far.
Yes, Alderman Moreno.
So has MCI or Verizon, have they, is this, have they been installing in the city historically, or is this a brand-new relationship? Could you go into a little bit of the history of telecom?
Yeah, sure. They have. They've done work. Verizon does not have a local franchise agreement. They have not opted to engage the city. Right now Comcast is the only real telecoms and cable video provider that we have a franchise agreement with. However, they have been coming in for permits for the past several years and doing installation work. But what has triggered this has been just new capacity they're trying to install, so it's going to require replacement of essentially all their infrastructure. So that was sort of what triggered this conversation. But they have certainly been doing work in the city and have been, you know, receiving, getting permits, one-offs for that work in the past.
So just a follow-up. Residents and businesses in the area that use their services should see an improvement in quality of service?
Yeah, I mean, that's what's been conveyed, is to kind of help with capacity generally, with service for telecoms. But this, you know, I wouldn't say that this is cellular as much as it's really backbone infrastructure to connect some of their towers. So the hope is that all that capacity will be beneficial to the service, but, you know, it's really for the backbone infrastructure.
Thank you.
One more technical question. Is this a sort of a precursor to 5G-type thing, or is it unrelated?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I don't know the specifics of what their fiber's going to be supporting, but I think that is probably a fair assumption.
Which is something that I think is going to probably revolutionize all our lives in ways that we can't even imagine today. Any members of the public that would want to comment on the proposal on the table? There being none, I would return this to the council for a roll call vote.
Make a motion.
Oh, actually, we need a motion in a second, don't we?
So moved.
Okay, we have a second, okay. Roll call vote, please, Biddy.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is approval of the 2019 Park and Rec Department Tenure Strategic Master Plan document. It's being presented by Joe Mobile, Superintendent of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So we are here this evening to ask, no, I should get this one first. All right, to ask for approval of our 2019 Tenure Strategic Master Plan document. Our current document, or our latest document, was drafted in 2008, and it ran its useful lifespan of the 10 years. We were able to accomplish Town Line Park and several other projects through that plan. And so every 10 years, as part of our planning process and our development for future facilities and needs, we undertake the process of a tenure strategic master plan. So 2018, it was due to be renewed. We started the process in March of 2018, when we came before you to ask for support in approving the funding. And then we partnered with the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Foundation and split the costs equally to have this document prepared for the needs of the community. You know, I will get into our needs and what we plan to use it for, but I know the Friends are excited to have a document that they can now use to plan their future fundraising opportunities and plan future projects and really get out in front of the development now of Parks and Recreation as we move forward. But as far as our plans go, this is a roadmap to align and drive the continual growth and improvement of our open space, facilities, recreation systems and services. So it gives us a plan that will lead us through the next 10 years of developments with Parks and Recreation for the community. The goal of this plan is to expand on the previous plan's successes and outline how the community will continue to provide quality parks, facilities and services through the data gathering and the community outreach process that we undertook through the process over the last year. So the planning process that we undertook identified several different areas that rose to the top, infrastructure requirements, the recreation trends, our community's needs and the expectations of our residents. And the planning process included, and it was an extensive, over six or so months, of public workshops where we brought groups together and brought the community together to provide input on what we, our current assets are and how to improve them or what future assets are lacking. We also conducted several focus groups. We brought in nine organizations, including groups from our dance program, our sailing program, and the outside organizations that utilize our parks and facilities for their athletic or other program needs, provided and gathered feedback from those meetings. And we also provided an online survey that we actually received 740 responses through the online survey, which Hitchcock Design Group is the company that did this project for us, and they were amazed at the amount of feedback that we received. To have 740 responses is, you know, unheard of. So they were really pleased with the input and the participation of the community to be able to draft and get us to our final plan. So what we looked at is Hitchcock came in and looked at a detailed inventory of, you know, cities' parks, our open spaces, our indoor recreation facilities, and they compared those to national benchmarks, so, you know, throughout the United States, as well as the state of Illinois' benchmarks, to see where we fell with our amenities. Do we have the same number of parks, the same number of acres, same number of pools, same number of playgrounds and, you know, basketball courts and all these other ones? But we made them and asked them to take it a step further, where we wanted to be compared to regional benchmarks, to our local North Shore communities, to see where we stood within, you know, our North Shore, I don't want to say competition, but our, you know, our other communities. And they don't have any websites or any documented information on those, you know, the national and the state, there's websites out there that provide what everybody thinks per acre you should have in this, or how many parks should be within what area. But regional, we had to go and, we actually reached out to our other park districts and asked them to provide information to what they had as far as facilities, indoor recreation, outdoor parks and so forth. So the ones that were able to provide us with the information were the ones that we were compared to and included in the program. But we had asked them to take it a step further, because we thought that was really what we wanted to compare to, not necessarily just national or state. So the goals that rose to the top, there was, you know, many different items and goals that came up, but the four areas that really kind of captured all of them were to improve existing and/or new indoor recreational space. Our facility was built and opened in 1979, and it's the same building with a couple additions. And, you know, we're starting to outgrow it, and so the community, you know, mentioned that, and it shows through this project. To systematically upgrade and improve most utilized and/or aging parks. You know, we began that process looking at the South Park Master Plan, and, you know, we have received the grant, we'll be starting work on that one, but we're, you know, tackling a lot of different smaller plans out of this through our other parks as well. To upgrade and improve athletic field condition and drainage. You know, currently, we don't have a truly athletic complex in our community. We put soccer fields in open space in parks, so they aren't built for the conditions that the clubs want to play on. So looking at, you know, upgrading, improving those, and really looking at the drainage, because several of our parks are very, take a very long time to drain with all this rain we have. And then also to evaluate new park amenities to bring into the community. You know, what doesn't Lake Forest have that people want to see? You know, the pool is always brought up, ice rinks are always brought up, you know, splash pads and other items as well were brought up. So that's really what this process, you know, allows us to look at and to then provide for the next 10 years for the community. And the action plan, it's a living document, and what that means is it's something that we can continually use to better the recreational opportunities of the community. And it's also updated regularly to achieve the targeted objectives in a fiscally responsible area. So it's something that can be changed and updated. It can be, I'll show you a timeline here in a minute, but, you know, it targets the highest priority items through all of the surveys and the focus groups, and it puts them early on in the program. And then, you know, the other ones that weren't as important or weren't as popular, they're still there, but they're further out. But this can change as funding or community priorities change as well. So the Friends use this as a fundraising. If we hear that, you know, I'm going to say turf fields, because that's been a hot topic over the years, you know, if that becomes a hot topic and funding becomes available, then that might be moved to the front and something else gets pushed back. So it will be a working, a working plan. I know it's difficult to see, but within the master plan, there is a timeline that is provided. And each year, this is just the first five, but you can see the different color, is a different project or a different facility, and you can see the span over each quarter of each year. And it starts with a, usually a feasibility study, to make sure it's something that, you know, is feasible and sustainable here. Then we'll go into the, you know, the planning phases and then work it out through the process. But we have a 10-year chart timeline within the master plan that will help us better, better plan and manage these projects. So, you know, we believe that the Chart Our Future campaign accurately responds to the city of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation's current context and the future position in the community. While we're implementing this over the next 10 years, you know, we will definitely continue to support the city's mission to be the best managed, fiscally responsible and appealing community, which promotes a community spirit of trust, respect and citizen involvement. And that citizen involvement was shown through this process with the number of replies and the focus groups and the input we received through our workshops. And then, you know, it provides us with a guide, a blueprint of action items to move forward, so that we can stay current with what the community wants. So that's what we're, you know, hopeful this document will provide us as we move in, you know, through the next 10 years. So I am going to ask for approval of this 10-year document. It was approved by the Parks and Recreation Board in February, but I will entertain any questions prior.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, prior to the vote on this particular plan, I would like to announce that I was previously on the Friends of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Board. I have tendered my resignation, so I am no longer a voting member on that board, so I want to abstain from voting, although rather than recuse myself in the event that there might be a question that is directed due to the depth and involvement of my participation from the inception, I'd like that to be known and also that I will not vote on this.
Thank you. Alderman Bushman.
I'd like to compliment Parks and Recreation, the board, the foundation. I think you've done an excellent job, a lot of work, the focus groups, the surveys, the comparison with the other communities through the benchmarking, all are, you did a great job. One point that did hit me a little bit is the benchmarking with the peer group, where we looked at the number of acreage and number of trails, and then we compared it on a per population, 1,000 population. And we came in significantly less than these other communities in terms of the number of acreage and the number of trails. And I'm wondering if that was influenced by the fact that we have this other opportunity, great opportunity in our community with open lands, that we have those sort of facilities. Do these other communities have those, that they are included in Parks and Recs, whereas we have that under a separate foundation?
Yes, and there's several other items in there that were skewed a little bit by that, is we looked at only Parks and Recreation or city-owned. Playgrounds were another one, where we didn't include the playgrounds in the school properties, where others have, you know, they may have included those, because it depends on how it worked. But yeah, the trails is open lands have plenty, but it wasn't compared.
Trails, it's hard to believe that would be almost, you know, almost one-half what these other communities have.
But yeah, they, we didn't include the open lands trails in the plan.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Well, I just wanted to thank you for the thorough job. I've been involved in a number of strategic plans, and this was top-notch. And you and your staff and the foundation are truly to be commended on a fabulous job with the timeline and everything else. I mean, it's the whole package, it's here, it's terrific. And if Alderman Reisenberg is watching tonight, I want to thank him for being sure that we took this out of the last agenda and spent a little more time on it, because it truly does deserve that. And I just wondered if you could sort of highlight some of the exciting future projects that you might be considering, because I found, looking at the document, some of those to be very exciting. And I understand that it doesn't mean they're going to happen necessarily. It all depends on future funding and approvals and need, but I wonder if you could just briefly highlight some of those really kind of exciting possible projects?
I'm sure. I, I know that the, an indoor, or an indoor recreational facility was mentioned quite a bit, and so we will be looking at, you know, our current situation and if there's room to expand where we're at, if there's room for other opportunities. I know athletic fields is a, is a big concern, as all the competitive programs continue to grow, and, you know, we're canceling and shutting down parks. That will be a big push, whether it will be the artificial turf, or if we'll try to increase or improve the drainage or turf conditions in the parks. We're looking at a Kinder Haven, you know, preschool expansion coming forward through this. You know, I know that at the Lake Um, you know, I know that at the lakefront, there's opportunities and, you know, there's talk about a learning center for the sailing program, a boating center down there, those have been on the, you know, on the last plan as well. But we will be looking at all those, 'cause I do, they all show up here. But really, I think the, the ones that stand out would be more of the, the turfs and the fields as well as than our, our facility. As times are changing, you know, we're still in the smaller building that we've had since, you know, 1979, so, those were, I think, the two that came up. I mean, you know, pools are always mentioned, uh, but with the beautiful lakefront, it's, you know, it's, I don't know if that one's gonna something we will push forward, but it's all, it's all in there, it's 184 pages of, of just a lot of information when you read through it, so. And the last thing too is I would like to thank, uh, our Parks and Recreation Board, because they attended the workshops and they participated through the whole process with, um, you know, getting us to where we're at with this as well, so. I know the Friends had a lot to do with it, but our Park and Rec Board did as well.
Yeah, well, thank you. Um, yeah, I particularly liked the bike trails, uh, that were called out. Um, I don't know if the boathouse is someplace I could store my kayak or not, Alderman Beidler might be interested in that as well.
One, one of the other ones, now that you brought the, the trails, but, uh, there seems to be a, a want or a push for a community garden.
Hmm.
And so we're looking at with the, you know, whether it's the South Park Master Plan, or if there's another park that we're, you know, we're looking at if that's a possibility that we might be able to put it, you know, up towards the front of the timeline as well.
Great.
Alderman Preschlack.
Yeah, Joe, I was wondering if you just, were there any conversations about ballpark of capital or expense, just, you know, kind of order of magnitude, if we did everything? I realize that they'll be public and private, and, you know, this is a great, you know, kind of strategical direction, but I'm just wondering if, you know, if it, um, had a certain range for the consultant, or there was any prioritization around just how hard something was versus bang for the buck, and just how, how we think about it when we have all these other needs in our community for capital down the road?
And I think, I think my, my first answer would be, I don't have a number wrapped around individual projects, I think that would come from the feasibility studies that we would do. Um, obviously, we'd look through the, the plan and see which items, um, were the, were the most wanted or most needed, and then start with that, and then we start to put the price together. And everything that's on here, obviously, is gonna have a large price tag, so we would be coming back in front of you for all the necessary approvals as well, but I don't have a ballpark figure, we didn't really talk dollars and cents through the plans.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Any other comments by, uh, members of the council? Any members of the public, uh, wish to comment on this strategic plan? Uh, there being none, I would ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
A roll call vote?
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Epstein.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Seven yea, one abstention, motion carries.
Thank you. As, as everybody else said, I was extraordinarily impressed with this document and how it sort of started in macro land and went down to micro specifics, and it was very, very well organized and presented, uh, and very impressive, and wonderful public-private partnership that, uh, you know, brings this about. So, uh, thank you to the Friends of Park and Rec as well for, for your contributions here.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just, uh, since, uh, council has approved this.
And to our former member of the residents.
I just again wanna thank everybody on the Friends of Lake Forest Park and Recreation Board and the Lake Forest Park and Rec Board. Uh, there was a tremendous amount of work, a tremendous number of hours that went into this, uh, from the very beginning when we sent out for the RFP, and I wanna personally credit, uh, two of our residents, Ed Zarek and Patrick Marshall. They took great care with this, knowing that this was going to be a plan designed for Lake Forest's future, not just Parks and Recreation, but who we are as a community as a whole. Uh, and again, recognizing Alderman Preschlack's point, that everything comes at a cost, but we needed a plan first, and throughout that process, we realized and acknowledged that this was going to be a public-private, uh, partnership moving forward, uh, helping when we can from the city, but this had to come from the residents in order to be supported by the residents, and, and, uh, they will be looking for that help. So, thank you.
Actually, if I could digress for just a moment about something I learned yesterday that I wasn't aware of, um, I'm a bit of a sailor, not a very good one, but we have a boat down by the beach, and I went down for the first time to put everything on the boat for the first time, without any intention of going sailing, but, uh, they, Joe was down there, we had a nice conversation about, um, something that we have in Lake Forest that's extremely unique. We have an adaptive sailing program. We have a specially outfitted, uh, sailboat that is designed for people with disabilities, um, across the, across the spectrum. It could be everything from young children to elderly people and, and people with, you know, uh, other forms of disabilities. It allows them to get out on the water and, and get, and go sailing. And, uh, they were out yesterday, I guess they do a, um, an open house every year, and the boat was in and out a couple of times while I was down there, and I was only down there for maybe an hour and a half or two hours. But, uh, there are only apparently three of these in the whole state of Illinois. And, uh, it, um, it's really a unique, uh, sort of opportunity that our residents, and I, is it open to other, to non-residents as well, or is it just for our residents? So it's open, because it's a regional, it's a regional, uh, service, but, but it's, uh, quite a unique thing, and it's the kind of thing that people, I'm not sure people know about it, I didn't know about it, and, uh, very impressive, so. So, uh, thanks to everybody who contributes to that and, uh, to, uh, to the Park and Rec Department that promotes it and supports it, and, uh, just another arrow in our quiver that makes unique, you know, makes Lake Forest a truly unique place. Uh, I believe this is the last thing on the agenda? It is? Uh, the last thing on the agenda is additional items for discussion and comments, uh, by council members. Uh, number one is a reconsideration and rescission of approval of a First Amendment to the restated agreement relating to the Gorton property. This is gonna be presented by Julie Tappendorf, our city attorney.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. At the last meeting, you'll remember that you voted on the First Amendment to the restated agreement for the Gorton, um, agreement that made a few changes to the structure of, of the Gorton Board, the city directors, and a couple of other, um, changes. Since that meeting and since that action, um, there have been a couple of questions and issues, but there were also some suggested changes that were discussed at the meeting, and we're recommending now that the council reconsider, rescind this, give staff enough time to put together a revised agreement that we'll present to you at a future meeting that incorporates some of the concerns that were raised both at the meeting and after the meeting.
Thank you. Comments, questions from the City Council?
Nope.
Uh, any, uh, any member of the public would like to comment on this item? Okay, there being none, uh, I would entertain a, uh, motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Whatever. Either, either or.
Have a motion in a second, uh, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rommel.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Thank you. Don't want anybody to be left out. Uh, next item is, uh, that there being no further business, please, uh...
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? Is, is this the appropriate time? Um, I just wanted to give a shout-out to, uh, our Lake Forest Police Department. I had the pleasure of participating in the Citizens Police Academy along with our city manager, Jason Wishe, and we both graduated, I'm happy to report. Um, it's an 11-week course, uh, three hours every Wednesday for a period of time, but it is one of the most thorough, um, experiences I have had, and if anyone has an opportunity to do this, I highly recommend it. Um, Howard Cooper, the coroner, comes and shows you pictures you wouldn't believe. Um, our state's attorney, Mike Nierheim, comes and talks about, um, our laws and what he does as a state's attorney, so we have luminaries there. Um, you do get to fire weapons, if that's your thing, at the, at the firing range. There are ride-alongs with policemen on duty, um, and I have to report, all we did was issue two warnings when I was out, and I was impressed with the courtesy and care and concern of our public safety officers, they're all to be commended, as well as their professionalism and incredible skills and education. It's really a remarkable police department you have there, chief. So, um, I was very impressed, and a special thank you to the two officers who coordinated it, Sergeant Brett Marquette and Aaron Krujko. Am I missing anybody there, chief? And to you also, chief, for being very hands-on with the program. I've been taking advantage of these programs. I also did a CPR program through the Fire Department, which was excellent. Mike Strong was there with me, we were pumping on a lot of dummies' chests, and again, it was a very well-run program, and Chief Seabird also asked that I mention that there is an equally excellent, um, Citizens Fire Academy that's going to happen this fall and is just as intense and, I'm sure, just as excellent. And so these are just some things that make our community, uh, really special, and I was honored to participate in it. I think it was a really full class, and anyone out there who is interested, I highly, highly recommend it. It was absolutely fascinating and, and beautifully done, so thank you. When's the next one?
Uh, next, this calendar will be fall, I'm just bringing it up.
Fall, and, and who would they contact to?
Sergeant Brett Marquette or Officer Aaron Krujko, but if they contact any member of the Park and Recreation Board.
So I think you just call the Public Safety Building, their non-emergency number, and they can put you in, in touch with, um, both the Citizens Police Academy, the Citizens Fire Academy. I'm sure there will be more CPR courses, and I think there's a women's self-defense course coming up as well, um, all of which are free to the public, and so I just really encourage people to take advantage of these, so, thank you for the time. Susan, don't we put those in the dialogue too? I, I would have to say, I did this early in my tenure as an alderman, um, and the, and the thing that impressed me the most, and I'm not even sure I've ever mentioned this to the chief, but the, just the, 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 the unflagging patience of your officers, of our officers, to answer any questions, and they said that right from the start, "You can ask us anything." And there were some fairly intense things going on, including the Laquan McDonald thing in Chicago, and everybody was like, can, I mean, and we talked about it, and to be able to, to be able to talk to people who are in the field about some of the stuff that was making national news was just an extraordinary experience. And, I mean, we were like, did they really mean anything? And they did. Uh, it was, it was, it was really, it was really helpful, and, uh, I'm, I'm sure the Fire Department is the same way, so, it is, it's a benefit we've got here.
Thank you very much, yes, it's, uh, continuing, uh, compliments to the professionalism and skill of our public safety people, uh, across the community. It's, uh, the closer you get to it, the more awed you are by the complexities of their job. It is truly something, there's, after seeing it a little more up close than I might like sometimes, uh, it's something I don't think I'd be qualified or able to do, and, uh, so, kudos. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Is that all moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.